Good evening, can everybody hear me in the back? Everybody hear me okay? Thank you. Please call or roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuddy.
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Fisher will be absent this evening. Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle's.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Uh, our suite reps, Andrew. Our absent this evening, and Mirko.
Here. We have three sets of meeting minutes to approve this evening. Uh, one from our city council work session on December 9th. One from our regular city council meeting also on December 9th. And then our, uh, city council work session, uh, from last Tuesday, December 17th. I'll move all three sets of minutes. Moved by Smith. Second by Knight. Thank you both. Mr. Smith, I'll let you.
I have no questions.
Ms. Knight. Any councilmembers?
Do you have a question? Uh, page four, Jamie Griffin. I think the address is missing. I don't think we have the 463 Preston.
Okay.
No, those are three digits. Preston and Cambridge are three digits.
I got one check just to be sure.
Same thing on top of page five, but it's three.
The only thing I saw was right above the Jamie Griffin comment from the Barbara Lacks. Second paragraph, there's a "then" and a "than." It's going to say housing was more affordable than it is today. Given actual.
Just take that.
But yeah, nothing major. Okay, so no further counts. All those in favor approving the three sets of min- meeting minutes? If I may say a "aye," please.
Aye.
Close the polls. Thank you, motion carries. Meeting minutes are approved. We have no free or arranged participation this evening. So we're down to approval of the agenda. Uh, there is an item L3 in purple in front. If somebody would.
I'll move the agenda with the addition of an L3 report, the purpose sheet, and then renumbering the rest of the reports.
It's not a report, it's an action item.
Yeah.
This purple is an action item for L3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is to, um.
Why does it say L3?
This is a recommendation from the.
Cause it's L3.
I should say it's L3.
Yeah. It was confusing me.
So just for the public, this is a request from our, uh, treasurer, finance director, assessor, to, um, get some help finishing up the assessing before the end of the year, or in the next forty-five days, I guess, I should say, before the January. So we'll discuss that when we get to it. Let that, that agenda be approved. So motion by Smith to approve.
Yeah.
Prove the agenda with the addition of L3.
Yep.
Third second for that, please. Okay, any discussion on the agenda? I heard something in the second.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all those in favor approving the agenda, if I may say a "aye," please.
Aye.
Close the polls. Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings, so we're over to item G on our agenda, page two, which is non-arranged participation. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to please step forward. Yes, sir. Welcome. Please state your name.
Good evening, good evening. And Carol, my name's Bob Murphy.
Okay.
I live at thirty-seven fifteen Bristol Drive, Dexter County. And if I may, tonight, I would like to wish each and every one of you and your entire families a blessed and joyous Christmas, a happy new year, and a pleasant everyone here.
Thank you.
If I may, could I go around and shake your hand?
Sure.
I don't have a coat.
Some of us do.
But I don't.
Thanks, sir. Merry Christmas to you.
And don't get in skirts.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I'm a second summer people. Very good.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? At the first, I believe. It is. It's good.
Hi, everybody. I'm Wendy Cardy-Sachs. I'm the director of real estate development at Avalon Housing. And we've a request this evening, a little later on in the agenda, to extend the inspection period for our purchase agreement with seventy-six fifty-one Dan Hoy. Um, Hilltop View, that would allow us the time needed to go through final site plan submission and approval of PUD site plan. Uh, we're requesting the extension through June thirtieth. Uh, we were thinking maybe April thirtieth, and truthfully, when we're hoping to submit, I'm hoping it's by the end of March. But we didn't want to have sort of multiple extensions, so we're hoping that, you know, margin coverage, everything. And just to note, since signing our purchase agreement, we've applied for and been awarded county home funds, we've applied for and been awarded federal home loan bank, affordable housing program funds, and we applied for and just found out the other last week that we were awarded a preliminary award of our long-term housing tax credit. So we're very excited about continuing to move forward. We've got a stupid working for a new level over a year from the council in November of last year. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled early January with the site plan review team at Avalon, and then we're hoping to submit our final site plan later in January to have on cue. So we really hope very much that you'll approve the extension, and we're here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Congratulations on doing the one. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Sherri Montoy with Faith in Action here at Dexter, also serving Chelsea. Uh, tonight, just want to remind you of our support for the property development work of Avalon Housing as they work with us to bring Hilltop View apartments to Dexter. Hilltop View apartments will house individuals and families who are already struggling to make ends meet, so they can have secure, safe, local housing. We continue to hear great things from the community with regard to support for this project, and we've already received and expect to receive more pledges of support from local residents, churches, and businesses for both redevelopment funds as well as ongoing support services into the future. And about a month ago, one local church even raised over twenty thousand dollars in one weekend in support, and we expect other churches to follow suit in a few months. Um, as Wendy said, Chelsea State Bank applied for and received a four hundred thousand dollar grant to support the project, and the state has issued the remaining needed funds through the low income housing tax credits to these apartments. We continue to move forward in addressing the needs of our community as seen through the work of Faith in Action, and we continue to welcome questions which we will work to answer throughout this ongoing and transparent process. So thank you again for all of your time and your dedicated work to this community.
My name's Dick Alrick. I don't live in town anymore, I live out in Delhi. But this is still my town. I had a great friend when I was a kid, when I was growing up, um, when I was an old man. Name was, uh, Stan Chapman. Some of the old timers might remember him as well, so. He was a, he was a full-blown drunk. I think this house would be, would be so good for him. Avon House, I believe it's called. It would be so good for him, he died. So good for him, people like him, he died just outside of town here alone. He sat there, his body sat there for over a day before anybody found him. This place, now, if this place has got a bulletin board, I will make sure that there is, is a note up there with all the times and locations of AA meetings in town. And I will put my phone number down so I could give them a ride if they need it. Uh, I'm eighty-one, I can't say how long it's gonna happen, but, you know, I'll do my best or I'll get someone to take my place. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Dick. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to communications. There are three communications in the packet, our upcoming meeting list, our signed calendar, and then a notice to intent for SiO Township. Do you update their master plan? Or that they are gonna update their master plan? Does anyone have any questions on the communications? Four comments. Seeing none, we'll move down to our first report of tonight. It's a written report from our public services superintendent, Dave Schloss and his team. To December fifteenth, I think.
They did pick up, um, lead bags today. Maggie filled the entire couple's room for me off here for this, so we're gonna have to dump that out and get a new one. About five, six hundred bucks, sometimes to do that. But they did have a lot of participation in that, too. They picked up a lot of bags today, so it was a big piece of their game.
That's good. Shows people isn't it, right?
Right, I mean, that's why we do it, because otherwise those would be sitting out, you know, people wouldn't, you know. It's working to know that that's the routine.
And this was the last time?
No, we'll do it twice in January, two Wednesdays.
Could that happen this month?
Yes. Yeah, so it's like the eighth and the twenty-third or something, because we're gonna do shipping on Wednesdays. This is just Monday, cause of the holiday.
There are a lot of people waiting to stay.
We're like.
It's hot.
Yeah.
It's pretty. It's a spring daylight. It's a spring daylight.
Right.
And we finally got her two this month. I thought it was funny that we use the exact same amount of water, like, two weeks each week. Three hundred and sixty-one thousand gallons each week. Oh, wait, you don't, you don't think it's right?
I don't, I mean, it'd be ironic, I didn't even notice it.
Other questions on the report? Okay, we'll look down to our community development manager. Michelle, good evening, how are you?
I'm fine. I was on my own on council today. Hearing little coughs and symptoms here and there.
Not from me, I'm not even gonna think.
Excuse me, I actually sound worse than I am, but that's okay. All right, so you've got my report in front of you, and before I go into updates, do you have any questions for me?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
On the tree planting.
Yes, sir.
Recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I noticed that the low bidder didn't bid two of the species or something, if I remember looking at it right.
Correct, they didn't bid two species.
So do we do a partial recommendation for the other one? The other bidder, or something like that, for the other species? You know, how's that work?
These are, what I do is, I put a list of possible trees that we may use, um, and it's mostly for a variety. The white fringe that they didn't bid on was a stretch, um, and the Magnifica Hackberry, again, those are specialty cultivars of those trees. Just because they didn't provide it doesn't mean we have to have it, so.
Okay.
I'm not worried about them. If it had been, um, that, that, some of the others that I'm sure we will end up using, I would have been more concerned about it, but.
Okay, okay.
And the two that, um, unfortunately came through, you see two under low dive farms at the bottom that have asterisks. Um, again, those are, are specialty cultivars. They provided substitutions that are acceptable, so. So that would have been my first update, was just to make sure that you all saw the tree planting, that'll come before you at your first or your second meeting. Excuse me, I spoke with the, uh, planning director at Dexter Township last week, and we talked about, um, the process that they've been going through on an update to their master plan. And what they were doing is, they were doing what's required in the, um, in the, um, enabling legislation that says you need to look at it and make a decision if you're going to update or do a complete overhaul. What they decided is they're not updating anything at this particular time because the census is so close to being done, obviously next year, and they will do their update after the census information is provided. Excuse me, um, the, um, our, the arborist that we use, along with our streets foreman Kurt, went out and walked, um, a portion of Grand Street that's.
Were you talking about SiO Township?
No, I'm talking about Dexter Township. We got SiOs intended.
Oh, yes.
Webster Township internally was looking at.
But now you're saying Webster, and you said Dexter.
I'm sorry.
So let's.
Dexter Township.
Dexter.
Dexter Township.
And that's just kind of out of the blue when update?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they were just looking to see if they needed to update. They decided to wait until after.
The census.
After the census, yes. Our arborist and streets foreman Kurt walked the portion of Grand Street that's going to be, um, for work construction. They were looking at the trees, and looking at, um, dead dying disease, what trees need to be trimmed, putting together a list of those trees so that we know what we're going to have to replace when the project is, is complete. And that list will be coming out later. Excuse me, I hope you all enjoy your cookies, um, have a very merry Christmas, a wonderful new year, and hopefully I won't be talking quite so deeply in the new year.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Hope that, uh, in a point of silliness on my part, I do read these as closely as I can, and at the, uh, the first bullet, it's on C, it says Mitcham will return to moderate bust sustained expansion in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty and twenty?
Oh, yeah, I know, yes.
Or, I think it should be but, but I'm not sure which is better, bust or but. But that being said, that's all I, just wanted to know, I do read these things.
Right.
Yes, I noticed the same thing, just for you, I left that in there.
Okay, uh, no board or commission or supplementary report that this quite test, or move down to the agenda?
Um, so unless I did go wide, I hope, uh, you have a chance to view it, but I think the cast's going all so far, we haven't had a ton of feedback, which is probably a good thing. Uh, the industrial park sign was installed on Saturday, so that is there now. It's very tough to find a location, mostly this one will work, um, not in cement, so if there's an issue, you know, it's not completely, it's, there's like post-driven, this type of installation, but I think it looks good. The ice rink sustained some damage, there was a bicycle on it this morning, there's been sticks and rocks thrown on it, somebody walked on it. When people walk on it and they break through, they have the runners to break in the liner, and if they break the liner, then it's basically game over. You know, it's not fixable, so we're hoping that it'll still be okay, but we won't really know. We'll know a little bit more after the thaw, because if, you know, this week, because if it starts leaking, um, there's not gonna be a lot we can do about that. So it's too bad that people mess with it. We did, um, put up a trail cam in hopes of maybe trying to figure out, you know, to deter, as a deterrent, they put up a sign, you know, today, additional signage about that, but it's just disappointing.
Is there any way that there's, uh, that we could install, uh, any kind of cameras or?
Yeah, they put up a trail cam.
Oh, they have, they have just a trail cam.
So it'll.
Not apartment one.
Yeah, this is what we've been using for dumpster corrals and different areas that we've had issues, first street park, things like that, so. And there's a sign now that says it's surveilled.
Now, it is fenced, but it's easy enough.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, yeah, like, hard or anything, or tall, you know, it's just decorative fencing, really. It is, the fence is closed, and there are signs that they close, but.
Somebody left a bike there.
I don't think threw a bike on it, or how the bike ended up there.
When I walked on Saturday morning, there were two real little kid bikes, looked like they just got left. The parents left or.
Somebody, the woman who put them there.
There were just two of them, I don't know if they were left on the playground. They were still there Sunday morning, nobody picked them up.
Picked them up, yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
That's what it looks like, cause it was red.
Do we need to consider higher, you know, higher fencing?
I'm not sure, I mean, we had some problems when it was on in Monument Park, you know, it's a little bit more isolated down in Mill Creek Park, I guess, which, but I guess we'll just have to see.
I don't want it to look like it.
Right. It sounds like a prison.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it, you know, if someone wants to get in, they can get in, or that kind of thing, but.
Yeah, oh, I told one of you, they're right, they're right. Please be nice to the ice rink, if you want people to actually be able to use it. So we have, um, a date that was about all of our saw grant requirements, so we're done with that, we'll do one final dispersment in January. But that was good. We have no follow-up with them because our rates were much more than they need to be, so we don't have any further follow-up. Um, the housing task force, we'll, we'll do a work session with them on January twenty-seventh, I think that was the direction we got the last meeting. And, um, I think that's it.
Mill Creek Parks, put the.
Yeah, I was gonna do that one, really contract.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Oh, and then we can talk about our meeting today, too, if you would do that, or if my can be screwed.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
So we did have a meeting today with, um, a lady from the Fair Housing Alliance, the, Derek Jackson, who's the Washington County Sheriff's Public Information Officer, Avalon, Faith in Action, I think that was everyone, Sean, Michelle and I, about planning for a public project, um, targeting probably two days, like a week night and a weekend in, um, late January, early February, um, you know, hoping just to be able to do, kind of in the format of the sheriff's community education series that they do, where they kind of do a presentation, and then maybe break into smaller groups for more direct questions. Avalon and Faith in Action are taking a lead on planning that and picking a date. But yeah, I mean, I think the meeting went well, and people had some good ideas about, I think the sheriff's office had some good, you know, Derek had some good ideas about structure. They have experience with a lot of needles on a lot of different topics, so I think his advice was good and.
Well, and with the increased comments that have been received at the planning commission and at our council meeting, you know, two weeks ago, um, I think it's important that we be on the front and have them try to answer some of those questions and, and/or dispel misinformation, or whatever it might be. So there's a little bit of planning from that side, so. No dates have been chosen, but probably late, late January. Is that your thing?
Yeah, that is. So the sheriff and then probably probably from the school, hopefully we can get to.
In, in your report there, under council work sessions, we did the Google. Saturday, did you get any?
Yeah, not everybody's responded to that yet. I also wanted to do one for either the fourteenth or the fifteenth for the next facility work session, but I was actually waiting for Norfolk, because they were gonna provide some information, but I didn't hear back from them on whether the fourteenth or fifteen works. So, yeah, we still have a little bit of stuff to do, maybe I'll follow up with them by the end of the week or beginning of next week. Cause you won't be here the fourteenth, or the eleventh, or that? Or the twelfth, or whatever the first meeting in February is? Fourteen?
Oh, not, I don't know, no, I'm planning to be here still, as of this point, I'm still trying to make everything.
It could be done then, too.
Yeah, so I'm changing, I'll, I'll let you know.
Do you send out reminders to people who haven't participated?
I have, yes, I can do that again.
Thirteenth or fourteenth of January?
It was the two days after the council meeting, it was the Tuesday, Monday, cause I thought you said you weren't gonna be here, so, whatever, I'll, we'll figure it out.
Elsa, any questions recording? So, under my report, I want to just mention, talk a little bit about DAFD. We did not, excuse me, we did not meet in December, but, um, the run total came out through the end of November. The chief shares a preliminary copy of that with myself and one member of Dexter Township and one member of Webster Township, just to check the runs to make sure that, uh, things look in order, sometimes runs from one community get placed on the other accidentally. We are, for the second year in a row, um, likely gonna be the lowest percentage of runs again. If you count the percentage through November, we're actually below thirty percent now, it's just twenty-nine point something. Versus Dexter Township through November is like thirty-eight percent. And when you're talking about a two million dollar budget, every percent is twenty thousand dollars, or twenty-one thousand dollars in case this, so there's, you know, there's starting to become a big separation in the cost based upon the runs. If it holds, obviously December is, you know, still active and they're still counting runs, so it could change a little bit, but. Do you, can I give you those figures again for the three? Yeah, Paul, I'm not, I might be off a little bit, but roughly, roughly through November, I think the city had about three hundred and seven runs, maybe about three hundred and ten, somewhere in that range. And that percentage is? Comes out to about twenty-nine point eight percent. Okay. And then Dexter Township is like thirty-eight percent. And then Webster would be the difference, thirty-two, or whatever the math breaks out to be. But, you know, on a two-point-one million dollar budget, every percentage point is twenty-one thousand dollars. And whereas we, we talk, we've talked a lot about it being a third, a third, a third, it's starting to shift away from that, to where, you know, there's a, there's gonna be, if there's a eight or nine percent difference between one community and the other, that's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars difference, you know, in terms of paying for service, so. Anyway, just wanted to keep you up to date on, on some of that. We did not meet in, in December, we'll, we'll return to meeting in January because we approved the budget in November, so. Can't think if there's anything else from that meeting, but. Union negotiations continue along, uh, we have our next meeting scheduled for, uh, January sixth, I think that is.
I apologize.
No problem. It's okay. So we've been, we've been trading offers back and forth, we'll probably have, uh, something in front of you for a closed session moving on, on the thirteenth, that's our meeting in January, I would expect to have. Please plan on something afterwards, it won't be long, but just so you can view that the offices are going back and forth. I don't have anything else other than to wish everyone a merry Christmas, a happy new year. We won't meet for three weeks, so, um, obviously everyone. Any questions from the audience? Okay, we'll flip over to page three of the agenda. Uh, we have the consent agenda next, with three items on the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, the three items on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in an amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. The resolution for the purpose of establishing organizational matters for the state of Dexter is basically to clear up the, uh, elections commission. And the twenty-twenty meeting calendar.
Moved by Mr. Smith. Support by Mr. Cousins. Mr. Jones, please call the roll on consent agenda, please.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no old business today, so we have two items of new business, three items of new business. First one is consideration of a resolution approving M.DOT contract number nineteen dash fifty-five seventy-two, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the contract for the Mill Creek Trail Phase Two project. If we could get a, a motion and a second, then I'll let Courtney go into the.
I'll move adoption of resolution on page fifty-four.
Motion by Michelle's, thank you. Second. Second by the office, thank you. Courtney?
Yes, these are the same contracts and resolution that we've seen with other endowed projects, Central Street, Ann Arbor Street, et cetera. Um, but project is out to bid, the bids are due January tenth, so we should be getting that for the holidays, which will be good to know the final cost. Um, but the contract does have to be returned within, I think it's thirty-five days of the receipt of the letter, so we'll need to get that back next week.
Uh, January twenty, yeah, twenty-twenty, right? Is it twenty-nineteen?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Quite confused when I read that.
Not getting it back in time.
Where do they open the bids?
It's M.DOT, so I think it's electronically submitted through M.DOT's portal, so all that's handled through M.DOT.
Okay, so it's not open in anybody's office, or this or that?
I don't really even know how M.DOT, I mean, I think it's submitted electronically to M.DOT, cause they have many, many out to bid at the same time. Basically, you know, any state projects go through their process, so. But it does get to pre-qualified bidders and, you know, the, it should be good because they'll be some of the first projects to bid on for the next year, so, for this construction season, so hopefully we get decent pricing.
Other questions recording on this contract? Seeing none, Mr. Jones, please call the roll.
Knight? Uh, Fisher? Excuse me, she's dancing. Bell?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Excuse me, motion carries, thank you, new business item L-two is consideration of the inspection period extension request from Avalon Housing for purchase of the Anhorn Conference, seventy-six fifty-one Anhorn. I moved that we accept the extension until, I think it was June the thirtieth, but hopefully for the other.
I'll support, second.
Second by Knight?
Um, I don't really have any additional comments, it's basically just to allow them to have time to complete the final site plan. They submitted the letter that says they completed their other unitary environmental assessments, they made their deposit of the five thousand dollars, or responding to the title subsidy, so it's really just the outstanding issue of the site plan that requires the extension.
So legally, they've been acting in good faith?
Yeah. And there's also language in the purchase agreement that says, you know, until they have those lights act upon secure, they don't, they don't have to close anyway. Which those won't be secure, secure till February March, so.
Questions on what we're doing? The original quote was given on February first, I think, or in fact, the date was February one, and it went out to November one. Okay, seeing none, please call the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Michels?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you, new business item L-three is consideration of assessing assistance. So we've added this to the agenda tonight, and our assessor is trying to finish up the assessing work that she needs to do before the end of January, and is asking for help. One of the persons that is available and a little bit knowledgeable to help her happens to be her son, Matt. And we have a charter, I'll say condition, or whatever, that, that says that, you know, if you're a relative of elected official or a staff member of administration, that in order to do that, to have that, bring that person on board, whether it would be a summer position or something like this, the council would need to act on a two-thirds majority vote to allow that to happen. So, that's what this is basically about, Marie, maybe you can go into more detail if you wanted.
Yeah, sure, I have probably sixteen to twenty hours of field work left to do. Plus, we have personal property that we have to have done, like by January third, and I still have the ECFs to do, and I still have some drawings and sketchings to do, and the, doing the field work is not just what happens out in the field, it's also computer work, which I would do. So there's just a lot that has been delayed because of what happened, you know, with my family. So, he, he studied the first several chapters of the Level Two Assessors Program. He's familiar with what assessing is, the importance of field work, what field work's involved, I would just need to show him basically how to work the tape measure, which he already taught me to, but, you know, and how to use the software, which I'll, you know, over the next couple of days. And three days should be enough, I think, to get all the field work done, and probably have a stab, a good stab at some of the personal property. Justin's actually in charge of that, but he's got an election that he's trying to ramp up for, so any help with that is also.
And we put a not to exceed him on six hundred dollars, so this isn't like some huge, like.
And, and his job starts up again on the second, so he's only available those three days.
So it's really just the end of this week, and then next Monday is one year?
Thursday, Friday, Monday.
It's in there, right?
Yeah, his job's just on hiatus for the holiday. And he doesn't mind cold weather, so.
Well, no problem.
Uh, probably? We need to move. So that's the background, yeah, in order of vote, we need a motion and a second, please.
I'll move, I'll move to hire Matthew Sherry to assess with assessing on the dates of December twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and/or December thirtieth, for six hundred dollars.
Not to exceed. I'll say.
Okay, motion by Knight, second. Uh, further discussion, if I understand what we're doing, and we tried to have a chance to read this, and we'll just put this on the table tonight. And you said it requires a two-thirds vote?
Yeah.
Correct, to pass, yeah. For obvious reasons. Yes. Any further comment? Okay, please call the vote.
Michels?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Bell?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you, Marie. Uh, we are down to item M, council comments. Mr. Michels, if you're ready, I'll start over there.
The one thing I have to say is that apparently Calder Dairy has a farm on South Field Road in Lincoln Park.
Yeah, that's where they're.
That's where your property is.
Not a farm, but that's their main location.
Enjoy the weather, everybody, that's all.
No cows present.
Did you come up with that way or said there?
Yeah, it says, visit our farm in person at.
Okay.
I can take a picture of that when I'm down to her, and it'll be fun to do.
Ms. Knight?
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and safe and happy holidays.
Same to you, thank you. Mr. Jones?
I, I will go on board saying the same thing, Merry Christmas and any reading of the pay balance.
Okay, Mr. Bell?
I'll echo that, and Michelle, did you make the cookie?
Yes.
Thank you. Like I need more cookies. Thank you.
Mr. Cousins?
Same thing, you know, I, we have happy dollars in, in our Rotary Club, and, you know, one of the things I was happy about is that we have a great Rotary Club, and we love each other, and we do a lot of things together, but I remind us that there are a lot out there that aren't very as fortunate, most of us, and we should consider those at this time of the year as well.
Well said. Okay, thank you, we are down to our second non-arranged participation on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening?
Ellen Shaw. Go ahead.
This on a beat, Mr. Mayor, this is personal interest, in reference to fire response, did I hear you say three hundred and seven run?
Three hundred and seven within the city, there's thirteen hundred overall within the district. About three hundred of them are considered shared, they're mutual aid or outside the public education.
Thirteen hundred for the year?
Yep, through, yes, through the end of November, it's about thirteen hundred total, three hundred in response to help people here in the city. It's about three sixty or three seventy or something in Dexter Township, and.
Do you know?
I could get you the numbers exactly if you want, I didn't bring those in.
Well, do you know the difference in the type of response, the numbers, medical, fire?
Well, the majority in medical, you know, mostly are medical.
But I, I have seen the numbers, and they can tell you what time they got the call, what time they sat their butt in the truck, what time they.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I don't have that.
It's all broken out by type of run, if you want to, but mostly, you know, response, medical response.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, I'm just, personal interest, right?
Yep, and they get a lot of false alarms on that go off, too, there's a lot of runs that are just, the alarm went off, they get there and there's.
So the new equipment now is in service, or not?
The two new trucks are in service, I believe, as, um.
The last I heard, one on them, they're still finishing up the equipment.
We, we have both ones in, okay, great.
They were training them.
All right, thank you very much. You're very welcome. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? Marie, welcome.
So I know I've said thank you before, but I'm gonna say thank you again, you're gonna get the formal written. Thank you, they're going slow, but throughout the whole thing, the one thing I never had was stress from my work. I had internal stress, but I never had external stress, and I just really appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll seek a motion for a chairman. Motion by Smith? Second by Bell? All those in favor? Those opposed, Merry Christmas, everyone. Seven thirty-eight, or seven thirty-nine, I'll let you decide.